Okay, if the interpreter would like to make the announcement and then I will set the interpretation settings and we'll go live.
Buenas tardes, bienvenidos a todos. Le informamos a la comunidad hispanohablante que para acceder a los servicios de interpretación deben elegir el idioma al momento de ingresar a la reunión. Para aquellos que estén ingresando vía una computadora, utilicen el círculo redondo "El Mundo" para elegir el idioma: en para inglés y en español. Esta reunión va a ser dada también simultáneamente. Gracias.
This meeting is held by electronic communication means pursuant to in compliance with Richmond City Council's ordinance number 2020-093, adopted April 9, 2020, and extended by ordinance number 2020-183, adopted August 20, 2020, and by ordinance number 2020-3232, adopted December 14, 2020, and the School Board of City of Richmond's resolution approved 2020 of April.
Great, thank you. And so, good afternoon to all. I'm Dr. Rely Ortiz and I serve as the Director of the Office of School Quality, but I also serve as the facilitator of this meeting and our memorandum of understanding. And per the memorandum of understanding, the State Superintendent of Public Instruction, who is here, that Superintendent Balo, and the State Board President, that's President Gekker, and he is not present, will meet with the local board chair and division superintendent at least twice per year to facilitate communication and regular updates. And so we do have the Division Superintendent Jason Camaras and the local board chair, Dr. Shonda Harris Mohammed. And so we are looking at our bi-annual update meeting. Mr. Camaras, did you want to say anything before I laid out the agenda?
Thank you, Dr. Ortiz. I just wanted to check if we wanted to have our videos on. I'm not sure if that's controlled by the state or by us.
When I jumped on, you all had the sharing rights also.
So can we, I believe it might be Tamika who is...
I am.
If you can get that on, that's great. In the meantime, we'll keep going voice only, okay?
Okay, thank you.
Yep. Thank you, Dr. Ortiz. Just happy to be back together with everyone and excited to connect with Superintendent Balo. And again, just very much appreciate the partnership and looking forward to the brief review today. With that, I will turn it back to you.
Excellent. Thank you Superintendent Camaras. And so what we have on the brief agenda today are some division updates included in those division updates. We're looking for information on vacancies and graduation updates, any community partnerships and parent engagement information, any summer plans that you're able to share at this time, summer programming options, any school board updates, governance training or retreats, any financial updates, and then division provided a student academic progress data. I mean, I did leave out, it was a relatively last minute ask, but for a summary update on the literacy plan. Considering all the literacy legislation, we wanted to make sure we had an update on that as well in this, in this space. So, Camaras, I will turn it over to and your team to drive. And then Superintendent Balo, she's on, and if she has any questions, she will jump in or she will hold them till the end because we know that time is of essence for this meeting, so.
Thank you, Dr. Ortiz. I'm going to turn it over to our Chair, Dr. Harris Mohammed, to share a few opening thoughts and to speak to any of the governance matters that you just listed.
Thank you, Mr. Camaras. Good afternoon, everybody. Even though I can't see you, I first want to thank the school board members for being here because many of them have taken their lunchtime or break to be with us this afternoon. Thank you to the Office of School Quality for allowing a time that I could be a part of this discussion. And just thank everyone, State Superintendent, the State's School Board Chair. Thank you so much for the support, the continued support, and our RPS staff that is supporting us this afternoon. So I was asked to provide some, some pieces of information. So thank you, Mr. Camaras, for that space. And if I will, I'll start with the governance. Dr. Ortiz, we, of course, per our MOU, we have to have annual governance training, and that is scheduled for September the 10th. I sent out a Google form in the, in the way of a poll. And so that is the, the date that we have scheduled. Also, we have a retreat that is not mandatory. For those who are listening, I've shared this, tried to share this during school board meetings publicly, that our governance training is mandatory. Our holding of retreat is not. And so if I can just take maybe 15 seconds to discuss why I think or ask the school board members to take a vote on a retreat, our governance training, of course, is mandatory. And we're talking, and during that, talking about how to build capacity, how to run the division as a governance team. The retreat, I think, and just speaking with, with some school board members, I know we were trying to have one last year, is really an opportunity for us not to just hear what we can and cannot do as a governance team, but how we're going to do it together and how as individual school board members, where do we need to be strengthened and stretched and understood and also build trust. So a retreat is more of a like, you know, more laid back than a governance training. And we do have a date for that, that is June the 10th. However, I've had two school board members reach out to me because that's a Friday to ask if we, if I could send out another poll to see if we could look at possibly a Saturday. So that's going to be forthcoming. I want to, at this time, take this opportunity to share what I think have been some growths for Richmond City Public Schools or some glows, I like glows. Let me start with the glows. The school board is demonstrating a strong support for teachers and classified staff. They will receive, oh, very good. I can turn, I just saw Mr. Camaras, so that means I can turn my, okay, very good. They will receive a bonus that was approved by Virginia Department of Education, so thank you for that. We implemented Wellness Days in November and our staff was very appreciative of that. I have not, this is the first time I'm saying this though, but would like to say as a board member, in the next year when we're working on a calendar, implement some of those Wellness Days into our calendar. For example, March is always a long month for educators, maybe a day in March, a day in April, things like that. Also, one of the things that I think our leadership does extremely well is they send out, Mr. Camaras sends out a RPS direct every day, sometimes twice a day. It depends on what is happening during the day. That allows everyone in the division, including the school board members, to obtain information about our division and what is going on in different schools. And it is also an opportunity for parents, families, community leaders, our staff, to send kudos to any other individuals in the school division. So those are some glows. I love starting with glows. I always say I love recognitions, best part of being a school board member. So that's what I think and what I've seen and observed. And there's many other glows as well. But with glows, you also have growth. So I'll just stop there because I know of the sake of time and we have some school board members that need to leave. So thank you for that space, Dr. Ortiz. And I can share the growths that I think we need to work on, but I know we have an extended agenda.
Thank you, Dr. Harris Mohammed. All right, did you want to, Superintendent Camaras, start with some other division updates, including graduation and literacy?
Yes, Dr. Ortiz, and thank you, Dr. Harris Mohammed, for the introduction. Yes, let me start with graduation. And I'm going to share a presentation that we provided to the board a few meetings ago, which was sort of the mid-year update on that. Let me just first say, you know, when I arrived in 2018, our graduation rate was in the 70s. Unfortunately, we found that there were several practices going on that were actually artificially inflating that rate. We have since stopped those practices, working in collaboration with the state. The result of that was an initial drop of our graduation rate, which we expected down to 70%. And then the year after that, we ticked up to about 71. And then last year, it ticked up to about 78. So headed in the right direction, but of course, still an enormous amount of work to do. And in particular, around our English learners, we've made a huge amount of progress, but still have a rather significant amount of work to still do to get them up to the 90s, which is where we want all of our students to be. Very briefly, I will share this presentation. So if you bear with me just one second. So I'm not going to go through everything because a lot of this folks already know, but here are our projections going into the spring. You see again, our overall rate at about 78%. And of course, it's always hard to predict exactly where we'll wind up, given all the various implications of credits and verified credits and so on. But these are our projected ranges. What I most want to note actually is this, which is our dashboard. Dr. Ortiz, can you see the monitoring dashboard? I just want to make sure. Great. So what this is really is our student by student, school by school graduation tracker. What I'm showing you right now is John Marshall High School. As you can see, we track everything in the state system, SSWS, our own student information system, Aspen, and then have a projection ability as well. We have categorized our students as, of course, already receiving, but then on target or at risk, and then several other categories. And so each of these students is tracked by our schools and our counselors. I'm just going to very quickly show, I don't want to show anybody's private information. So just quickly, you can see that we have all the students down there. And then what that allows us to do is check every last graduation credit, make sure kids are in recovery if they need it, that they're retaking SOLs if they need it. And so this is, for me, one of the proudest things we've done in collaboration with the state is to get down to this level of detail and tracking to make sure that we're providing the very specific supports that our kids need. I just personally met with each of our high school principals and counselors to go over all their data and to discuss any obstacles that needed to be cleared or additional supports that needed to be put in place. And so again, I'm cautiously optimistic about the growth that we are hoping to see on that front. Let me pause there. Glad to take any questions on the graduation front.
I think we can continue on.
Okay. Then I am going to jump to early literacy, since I know, Dr. Ortiz, that was something that you noted the state was in particular interested in. And that is great because it is something that I'm particularly passionate about. We have a goal of ensuring all of our third graders are reading proficiently or above by the time they complete their third grade. We have quite a lot of work to do to get there, but we are organizing all of our resources and staff towards achieving that goal. I think that is particularly important coming out of the pandemic. And we have a very, very significant amount of unfinished learning that we are working to address. So let me share that presentation with you. Second. Whoops, wrong thing. There we go. What I'm going to do is, is jump to this slide, which just kind of shows our assessment cycle. We presented this data at our last meeting, so we were in the kind of late March timeframe. Of course, we have the PALS assessment, which comes from the state, but we also do a beginning of the year, middle of the year, and end of the year skills assessment, which is focused on the core skills needed for reading, phonemic awareness, and so on. I won't go through all those details, but we are working again at a very granular level, looking at each student and what their growth target is over the course of the year. As you can see, we also have dashboards which are tracking this again, down to the student level, where they were in terms of the key reading skills at the start of the year, middle of the year, and of course, end of the year. We have this broken down by student, by teacher, by school. We're able to see, for example, two classes where students both came in at roughly the same starting point. And in one class, they've made enormous growth, and in another class, much less growth. And so that is a good starting point for conversations with teachers about, you know, what's working in this classroom, what's not working in this classroom, and what kinds of supports that they need. So this has been a really, really powerful tool that we've been able to develop over the course of this year to support this work. Let me jump to the data and then I'll come back. So as I noted, our beginning of the year scores on these key skills were extremely low. Of course, we saw coming out of the pandemic, enormous unfinished learning, and you can see that here again, on these key reading proficiency skills. Overall, we were at 13% at the beginning of the year. Can you see our subgroups even lower in many cases? The good news is that at the mid-year point, we've seen rather dramatic growth overall, from 13 to 37% on these core reading skills. Of course, an enormous amount of work to still do, and we still have significant gaps across our subgroups. But I am pleased that based on the science-based interventions and tier-one instruction that we're using, we are seeing the kinds of gains and increases that we would expect. So very grateful to our teachers and the academic team for all the work they've done on that front. Here we have just by our elementary clusters. So this is our first cluster of elementary schools. Again, as you can see, very, very low beginning of the year scores, again, reflecting a lot of unfinished learning from the pandemic, but also some rather dramatic increases over the course of the year so far. And this is our second cluster, similar trend, extremely low skill level at the beginning of the year, but again, seeing rather significant growth so far over the year. I do want to note, since I know early literacy and science-based interventions are extremely important per the recent legislation, and I just wanted to share with you some of what we use. Of course, on the screening side, PALS, but we also use iReady. Our core instruction is EL education. And Dr. Balo, I was excited to see that this is one of the recommended curricula in the state of Utah because I was looking up science-based interventions there, close by to where you were. I also want to note our interventions. Here, we use for tier-two and tier-three Hagerdy and SIPs are the main ones. And then, of course, when we really get into tier-three, Boston Reading. So all of those interventions are extremely well researched, based on all five facets of the National Reading Panel, and have been proven to be effective. And I think we're beginning to see some of that payoff in our classrooms. Again, tremendous amount of work to be done. I would be the very first to share that, but certainly making progress. All right, and the third topic that we wanted to make sure that we touched on, but I'll get to everything in the list, Dr. Ortiz, was our staffing. And so I'm going to pull up our staffing. Oh, I think I just accidentally deleted it. My apologies. I'm going to stop sharing and I'll, I'll get it back up. Our staffing update, I will say generally, we have faced significant challenges, like many school systems across Virginia, but also across the country. And so here we go, here's the data. This was as of March 18th. So altogether, we have just shy of 3,000 teachers. You can see our current vacancies actually are not as extreme as they were at one point in the year, but still, any classroom that doesn't have a full-time teacher is one classroom too many. So elementary, 25, middle, 40, and high, 14. We're also tracking, of course, other higher roles like bus operators, custodians, nurses, school cafeteria managers, and then also tracking temporary positions as well. You can see on the side there. I am delighted that per the state budget, which looks like it's going to survive with money for teacher increases and with the city's contribution, we will be providing a 5% increase to all staff next year. And as the Chair noted, we were able to provide bonuses, $3,000 for our full-time staff and $1,500 for our part-time staff. I've already heard from dozens and dozens of staff about how appreciative they are of that, and I certainly think that is going to help with retention. Of course, you know, retention is a complicated matter that is far beyond money. It's about the relationship a teacher has with their principal, the amount of support that they have, flexibility in certain parts of their job, and so much more. So we are working on all of those fronts to ensure that we not just retain great teachers, but also attract more to RPS. Towards that front, we do have a recruitment campaign that we're working on and hope to launch soon to help bring more folks to Richmond and to RPS in specific. And then a few other items that Dr. Ortiz listed on the community partnerships and parent engagement. Really proud of the work that our family liaisons have been doing. These are folks who are out in the neighborhood every day. We have 26 folks divided into four regions. They're out knocking on doors, asking for feedback, sharing information. We have bilingual family liaisons out there as well. As a result of their efforts, we have made some pretty dramatic improvements in terms of chronic absenteeism. Our overall rate is, of course, still too high, but just since January, been able to reduce that rather significantly. And so really grateful to the work that the family liaisons have been doing to support that work, support our schools. As for summer plans, we will have a summer program for all of our students. It's a combination of literacy and enrichment. So we're very excited. Our goal is to have about 4,000 students enroll. And at the high school level, any credit recovery that is needed to help get those final graduates across the finish line. We had explored the possibility of an extended year model when we adopted our calendar last fall. Ultimately, the decision was not to move forward with that and to move forward with the traditional year calendar. But we are looking at continuing some specialized support in extended day programs next year and are hoping to add some additional learning time that way. I think that covers all the main topics. And so happy to pause there. I think we have just about 115 minutes left. And so happy to take any questions and explore anything else that, Dr. Balo, you'd like to or anyone else.
Thanks, Superintendent. My name is Jillian Balo. For those of you who I haven't met, I'm Virginia State Superintendent. And first of all, thank you for the presentation. It's always wonderful to just hear how the students in, in the schools are doing. And it's been a pleasure to visit with you, as well as several members of your school board and members of your community, as I've become acquainted with Richmond myself. So just maybe, I just wanted to dig in a little bit more on your recruitment efforts and see, you know, during the course of the year, have you had success in filling vacancies that you started the year with? What did that look like? Do you have some areas that there are more vacancies than, than others? And I'd love to hear a little bit more about your campaign. And at the state level, we have several tools and grants that are available to help with that. Has Richmond tapped into any of the reimbursement opportunities or the statewide tools?
Thank you, Dr. Balo. I will say it has been a challenge this year to fill vacancies over the course of the year. The, the labor pool is, is, it's tight, and a lot of folks have left the field altogether. And so that certainly has been a challenge. The team has worked extremely hard. And certainly, we have hired many throughout the course of the year, but we've also lost them during the course of the year. So it's been an ongoing effort. We're in a stronger position now than we were earlier, but again, not where we, where we want to be. As for the campaign, we've been working with some philanthropic dollars with a local marketing firm, and they are putting together a whole suite of materials, which will include print and video, online, and so on, which are designed to attract great folks to come to RPS, come to Richmond. And so we're excited to be able to finalize that, present it to the board, and get it out to the public real soon. So hopefully, you'll see some of that messaging out and about when you're here in Richmond. I will say that the most difficult areas to fill have been, as you might expect, secondary math, some of the secondary science, and then also some of the social emotional support positions, where again, they've had an exodus in the field, and so there's just a real critical shortage. We have put in our ARP spend plan signing bonuses for some of these high need and shortage area positions. And so hopeful that that combined with the recruitment campaign, combined with other efforts that we have underway, will help address that going into next year. We have here Ms. Lee, our Chief Town Officer. Is there anything else that, that you would add that I haven't covered?
Thanks, Jason. Hi, everybody. It's great to see everyone again, and it's wonderful to meet you, Dr. Balo. We have four full-time recruiters that are working arm-in-arm with principals and other hiring managers. We have been successful in filling positions throughout the year, but as Jason said, the, the pool of teachers specifically for mass science, especially, and especially exceptional education have been challenging. And so we are in discussion with partners such as, you know, RTR, the Richmond Teacher Residency, to see what we can do to increase those numbers of teachers that enter the field. Additionally, we're in conversations with other local, as well as just regional colleges and universities, to try to increase the number of teachers overall, but again, with those endorsements and licensure in particular.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
Sure.
Any other questions or anything that we could help clarify or provide more information on?
I just wanted to offer, just I see Dr. Harris Mohammed, I wanted to offer her an opportunity for any closing remarks before I pass it over to Superintendent Balo. I just want to offer, just I see Dr. Harris Mohammed, I wanted to offer her an opportunity for any closing remarks before I pass it over to Superintendent Baylor. But just for the good of the group, we spend a lot more time digging into data and having more rich conversations during our corrective action plan meetings. Which are held every other month. And then additionally, the chiefs and um the state superintendent, well, not the state, the division superintendent. Meet on off-cycle monthly um to touch bases with um members of OSQ. To make sure that we're fulfilling what we need to do regarding the corrective action plan. And so this meeting truly is just a summary and overview and an opportunity to have some conversations that may not be had in other spaces. Um to make sure we're level set. So Dr. Harris Mohammed, I wanted to give you the floor and then obviously before we close, I wanna give Superintendent Baylor the floor as well.
Absolutely. Thank you, Dr. Ortiz. I just wanted to share with everyone. I I I want to make sure that this is recorded. So our community um know that we were aware, we're having some streaming issues, school board colleagues. And so this meeting will be uploaded by four PM this afternoon. Um wanted to say that. Thank you so very much. There is still some work to be done and I believe that we are stronger together when we work together. Um I believe that we can get there. So um Dr. Ortiz and State Superintendent uh Baylor, thank you so very much for the continued support. And I look forward to State Superintendent um Baylor hearing more about the reimbursement opportunities from our superintendent. That will provide support for us and our talent office. Um and also we look forward to from the board, the communication from the um the corrective action plan meetings. That is outside of this space. So thank you so very much. And again, thank you to my school board colleagues for taking time to be to be here this afternoon. That's all I have. Thank you.
Before, um can I respond to that Superintendent Baylor before you jump in? The uh Mr. Cameras and Michelle should be providing timely updates after the corrective action plan meetings. And so we do ask that they report out the summary of those meetings to you all in your board meetings. And so if that is something that, you know, we need to have a further conversation with, um we can.
We've been doing that, Dr. Ortiz.
Superintendent.
Well, thank you and um Madam Chair, I I have the opportunity, I think, of um just leading us out of this meeting. And um I just want to double down on what you said about partnerships. Um I think situations like this can be viewed one of two ways. Uh this is something that we have to do or this is something we have the opportunity to do. And I love how you framed glows and growth, um because I I think that's a an honest way to look at student data. And and be able to recognize and allow for grace um of growth. And thank goodness that um we have a starting point that is um measurable by the data that we have. And um that there really isn't a a finish line um when it comes to the growth of our kids, but that we can work to always. To always improve and to always uh grow our kids from year to year and look at the metrics that matter the most. And um so thank you, Superintendent, for presenting those today. I uh wanna thank you all for for your work. Uh as as you know, sometimes um. Working, working hard isn't always working smart or as smart as we can. And so I'm so appreciative of the the deliberations that you have as a board, um as a district leadership. To make sure that the work that you continue to do on behalf of Richmond's kids is um is not just hard work, but it's smart work. It's the right work for kids and we look forward to continuing our partnership to um to achieve that. And and finally, I just wanna thank a Dr. Ortiz and her team uh for the ongoing work and support. Again, you know, this is a a tricky place to maneuver some days when you are required, when we're all required to be partners with one another. But truly, the common ground is that we care about student success. We care about Richmond's uh success as well. So um thank you, Dr. Ortiz, for facilitating sometimes that narrow water. Um and making sure that that we uh can continue to have a productive partnership with one another on behalf of Richmond students. So thank you again for the opportunity to hear the update and to uh ask some questions.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Well, we appreciate the continued partnership and we'll keep moving forward. Thank you all for time this afternoon.
Thank you, Dr. Ortiz. Everyone, have a good day.
You all as well.
Take care.